I'd like to call our regular meeting for June 12th. If you would stand and join with me in the word of prayer if you'd like.
Heavenly Father, we thank you this day. We thank you, Father, for many blessings. Continue to pour out on us, yes, that you would help us to do the things that are right, that you're in this care, that you guide us in all that we do. Your son's name is here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All the guys in the plan, just phone rings, I'll have to answer them. All right, now we'll ask for the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin the agenda, there's a couple of things I'd like to bring up. Number one, Ms. Thompson from the mayor of Elkins is here to talk about the property easement which we had an old business. She has a city council meeting in Elkins at six o'clock. So if it's possible, I'd like to move her up to the head of the agenda.
Do we have a motion to move the approval of the property easement at Elkins Sidewalk? Move to three right after the GCA. Do we have a second? Any discussion, questions? All in favor? Can you vote?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to request that we also amend the agenda to delay the approval of number 10, approved of the structural bids. We opened those today, and we have a large number of views on both of those, so we need a little time to analyze those. So if we can bring those back, if they're at the special file meeting in two, five minutes.
All right. Do we have a motion? Second?
I'll say.
Any discussion, any questions? All in favor? Can you vote? Hey, just want to welcome our guests.
One more thing I just wanted to say. There's, I passed an email out to everybody. Mr. Dale Long from Richland School did all his fundraisers and everything, and he brought this up at our last meeting. So he's looking to get another $800 from us. They were, I'd just like to bring it up, put it on the agenda if we can, to talk about it.
Do we have a motion to add a view? Richland School, excuse me if you say, finds a request for $807 to the unit. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Any special questions? All in favor? Can you vote? That's where I was, my next question. Want to add it back into number one of all visions? All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda as a meeting. Second?
I'll say.
All in favor? Can you vote? And that will welcome our guests. Welcome everybody here. Thank you all for coming. Move to our next item, the GCA, is this someone, the GCA?
I am here. We don't really have much today because of the suburbs. Everybody's working really hard, but I've talked to, who's still working every time.
Next item, we feel, approval of the property at Elkins Sidewalk. There's Ms. Thompson, she's looking forward to it.
Thank you, Dr. Webb, and I thank you members for allowing me to do this. I guess our company starts here in a little bit, and it's always on the same night that you all have this. And I do have copies, or new copies. They all get copies of the, okay, the letter that I wrote to the board, you're missing through, make them out and everything, good. And then a copy, did you get a copy of the actual description? They do all have that. I have extra copies if needed, so, okay. I will just say that then, this is a grant, it's a 100% grant that we put in for the real side, A sidewalk, it'll be Elkins first sidewalk. It comes under the Safe Routes to School program. We felt very, very honored that we were able to get this grant, and we have started on it last year. We've already had an environmental phase, and we're right in the middle of the design phase. We, of course, have got to have two easements approved, and if you look at your map, it goes right down beside, right down Market Street, it goes from City Hall up Market Street. And I highlighted a couple of ways, but it goes past the church, which is right on the corner of Ball Road, and then it comes right on up. And I've been over this with a little thick wood and Mr. Eads. And then it turns off of Market Street, heads straight up the hill, across the county property, right hills east. Now, I know the last time y'all talked about this, you were wondering why there is a 50-foot easement up at the top. And that is, when they really came down to doing the design, they realized the grade was steeper right there than they could originally thought. So therefore, there's got to be a, or wheelchair accessible, it's got to have a ramp that's going to come around and make it further. So that is, it's here, it's on the other page. It's this, it looks like this, right here, where the sidewalk comes up, and then you've got a 50-foot right there, that's what you're looking at, right there. Okay, so the sidewalk is going to come, this is Market Street, sidewalk's going to come straight up, and then it will turn and go up this grate, so that it will be wheelchair accessible. So, and then it will come right to the driveway right there. And if you look on, in my letter, but also it's in here, it says that the contractors will restore said property to a condition similar or equal to that existing at the commencement of the construction. And then on down here in the next paragraph, and I state that also in my letter that I wrote to you, it states that is to remain the property of the undersigned, of course, the undersigned is going to be whomever you decide to sign it, but nevertheless, it's the school board, that will remain the property of the undersigned and may be used by the undersigned for any purpose desired. So I mean, it's going to stay the property of the Giles County School Board. So we just are making improvements. Now, the reason that the sidewalk itself will be five feet wide, but the reason we've got to have wider temporary easement is so we can get construction to equip it in there. But then it is guaranteed that it will be put back to the exact ordinary condition that it is now. Do I have any questions?
Some of the confusion came from, if you look at the drawing and you see the 50-foot easement, but if you look at the description, the description, the description's not matching the drawings. It's calling out a cut center line 20 feet off the center of the road with a 20-foot wide description, and then it goes down, the 50-foot and the 20-foot aren't matching on the paperwork versus the drawing.
Well, I could give you a big drawing if you want.
It's not, I need a bigger drawing, it's, the drawings doesn't match the text.
Okay.
And that doesn't have to be, I hold up the issue tonight, but whenever this gets done, we need to make sure.
Well, it'll have, it's certain, it's had to be.
I just want to bring that.
Okay, thank you.
I went down, Ms. Thompson showed me around, showed me where the sidewalk was going to go, where it was going to cut across the property, and it's going to cross the south edge of the property by the basketball courts they have there, and then go up the hill to the parking lot. And she showed me where the, why it's going to be, you know, why they're going to do the handicap grants the way they do, which is why they have to have that 50-foot easement. And that was one of the biggest questions we had, was why a 50-foot easement at that point, you know, since it was a piece of property. But she showed it to me, and it looks like, I mean, it's a great idea.
I think this department also brought up the fact that there was some lines and some type here, whether it was sewer lines, what you.
No, sir, yes, and I checked that out. And the sewer lines go off up the back, the east side of the school, and then I checked with the water department. No, sir, the water department, the water comes up Main Street, the Market Street turns on Ball, so it goes up and then comes up to the school off of Ball. It doesn't get from off the Market Street. So there are no lines that we have.
We weren't sure where they, where they were, we voiced that concern.
That's right, that's right. And those were highly concerns, very much so. Any other questions or comments? And I'd like to get a motion that you all approve it and give authority to someone to sign this, proper authority.
Mr. Chairman, since, I actually went down and saw it, I wanted to table this before. I make the move that we approve the, approve their property, the property.
We have a motion to approve the property easement for the Elkins Sidewalk. Do we have a second? Second? Any other questions or discussion? Is not all in favor? Can you vote?
No, I do appreciate this, and you know, I will say, thank you so much.
We appreciate that, we appreciate Elkins doing this too.
Well, thank you.
Glad you got to bring it in.
Oh, we were so proud of you, I was delighted.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I can go by these sheets, but you just come up one at a time, and I can't hold on this three days.
There you go. My name is Tammy O'J. I am a special education teacher at Giles County High School. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you guys tonight. I'm here to speak in regards to a transfer letter I received on the 20th of May. And Dr. Webb and I had a nice discussion yesterday about the decision. He did hear my concerns and agreed to think on it, which I'm appreciative. I also wanted to share with the board what those concerns were, so there were no misunderstandings of why I was questioning the transfer. First of all, I am the only highly qualified certified math teacher for the special ed department at Giles County High School. And my removal would affect the services and the accommodations that are available to my students at that time. These direct services are needed to ensure their continued progress toward their goal of obtaining a high school diploma, and after all, meeting our students' needs should be the primary reason why we all decided to work in education. It's my number one goal. Secondly, transition to life is one of the most important goals that our special education students deal with. It requires many hours of planning and locating and connecting our services to ensure that they are given every opportunity to access their community and live independently. And the school system itself has spent a lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of resources over my 18-year career to ensure that I was trained to help students in that capacity in meeting their needs. From what I understand, closing achievement gaps was the reason for the move to Bridge Fourth Middle School, and, which I fully understand the importance of that. But I also have a concern that my transfer leaves an even larger gap that affects twice as many students at Giles County High School. And many of my students are in critical points in their academic career with very little time left before they enter their rest of their lives at this point. And hindering their progress toward their transition is my, in my opinion, far more detrimental. I realize there are very many difficult decisions that come in front of the board, in front of Dr. Webb, and I know that I have very little control over that, even though I have my own opinions. I pray that I am allowed to continue to be a valuable resource for my students who may not know what their next step is. I received some letters from a few parents and even a few of my students. I gave each of you an envelope, including Dr. Webb, so that you could see their concerns. I wanted to share that with you. I am here only to respectfully request a reconsideration for my transfer because I feel so strongly that it will have a negative effect on the progress of my students at Giles County High School. I'm appreciative of the board's time, I'm appreciative of Dr. Webb's time. Again, I just pray that our students are the ultimate winners in this situation, and thank you for your consideration.
My name is Summer Mitchell. I also received a transfer from Giles County High School to Bridge Fourth Middle School. I'm currently guided by the counselor at Giles County High School. My transfer states that I would be a seventh-grade teacher at Bridge Fourth Middle School. I did speak with Dr. Webb today at 3:30, so we had a conversation a little bit earlier today, and I was able to address my concerns with him. My main question was why, and I was explaining, I believe, just like Ms. O'J was, about a achievement gap at Bridge Fourth Hill. My concerns were that I have a master's degree in counseling to hold that position. I haven't been in a classroom for nine years. I'm very good at my job, I've had high ratings on all of my, highest ratings on my evaluations. So it didn't make a whole lot of sense to me. We discussed the achievement gap, Dr. Webb and I discussed achievement gap this afternoon at Bridge Fourth, and the need for why some people are being changed. I also brought up the fact that I felt like there was a little bit of, that this wasn't a professional move, that this was more of a personal move at the end of this last school year. There were concerns about a particular student graduating, a student who was in 11th grade, had been gone from our school for a few months doing credit recovery at Richland. According to TCA 4968303, that is a move on when ready policy, that is when students can graduate, when they are still an 11th grade student. You have to meet many requirements, including completing two credits in AP or IB or dual enrollment, you have to have met benchmarks on ACT scores, which none of this has been in place for this particular student. Nor had the student made, met state board requirements for graduation. Only 11th grade. Dr. Webb and I discussed this this afternoon, and that there were numerous students who had gone to Lawrence County High School, that he just couldn't tag them, and our graduation rate is a concern at the high school, but this particular student didn't meet the requirements, even with his extensive credit recovery to graduate. And he did not, as of our graduation date, I'm not sure anything's happened in the summer. Beyond that, I've never had a personnel issue with anyone at the board at our school. So I just really didn't understand what this move was about. And Dr. Webb did say that he would contact me on Monday, that he would consider our conversation that we had this afternoon. I respectfully request reconsideration. I work hard at Giles County High School, I would like to keep my position there. As far as I'm aware right now, I'm the only person with high school counseling experience currently employed in the county. Our other counselor went to Southside, and they, so, right now, I, until July 1st, I'm the only person there with that much of experience. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate you listening.
Hi, I'm Dr. Amy Harwood, and I am here to plead for textbooks. I'm a veteran, so I believe in following the chain of command. I've already talked to Ms. Yum, already talked to Dr. Webb, and I've contacted several of the board members, or actually by now, all of the board members this week, Dr. Anderson and I did. And I have two bachelor's degrees, I have my master's degree in curriculum instruction, and I have my doctorate in educational leadership. I'm certified to teach kindergarten through 12, although I've only ever taught high schools. Here is a copy of the supplemental material that the text, can I pass this up? Would that be appropriate? Here are some copies of the supplemental textbooks that were given to us by the textbook company for K through 12. And I did a little Googling, I was told to Google, and so when I did some Googling, I found out the textbooks that I had in the samples that she delivered were only appropriate, the highest age I found was 12, was 12 years old, and the lowest age is four. Now, here's a copy of a big three textbook that has been in service, it's done a great job. This is one of the best copies that we have as far as shape, and you can tell it's kind of falling apart, and this is a better, one of the better books. And I'm pleading with you, if we were going to go to something like this, which is what Trebekka issued us, last year, they went away from textbooks, but they issued us all iPads, and then they purchased the licenses for the books to be downloaded on the iPads. The books were then accessible once they were downloaded, and they could be downloaded at school, then they were accessible anywhere we went. But I just believe that we are taking a giant step in the wrong direction as far as our textbooks go, and I plead with you to reconsider your decision to consider something like this, which is, this is the highest book, by the way, and it starts off with two pages of actual material, and then it goes into a comic book. And this was the, this was the only book that I had that was actually, this is the one that is geared for 12-year-olds, and I think that this is not good, it's not going to be good for our students. The rigor is horrible, there are no questions in here to ask, and these books are not even books that are going to be hard copies, these are going to be supplemental material that only, that the kids can only access online if they have online access. So I plead with y'all to not do this. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
We're, we're in the process of doing our best to give technology to every student in our school. We've got to start somewhere.
I agree.
So what it, and I've not done any, this is just sort of, very long term, but not doing any, as far as cost, we've not done any, delving into how much it would cost us, but suppose we started with social studies and make sure that every student had some kind of technology available to us.
Woo, I am.
And we're probably right at the 50% technology-wise now, close to it, or going to be. We've got Wi-Fi in every building, I'm not talking about modems, I'm talking about something that you can pull out your laptop and actually go anywhere in the building and get, get on in. So what I'd like to investigate is to see what we can do, because we're, I mean, we've got, I believe we've got some money we can lean around to see. I'd rather us say go where the students like to go, and there's not one of them that cannot break their cell, my cellphone better than I can. I think I'm correct in that. And, and they, from what I've read, they even like to learn. They learn, and they don't know their money. And so what I'd like to propose is that we try to find the money to go that route, and instead of spending $300,000 on textbooks, let's try to go that route. It just seems like it would make more sense. What y'all, I don't, I don't know what y'all think.
When I talked a little bit last night.
Yeah.
We were all through, you know, this great, this theory, doing that. I just want to carry it a little bit further, and, you know, over the past several years of these grounds, there's been a money that we can into our reserve fund trying to fix our buildings. We have been really deficient. We've missed an opportunity to have spent a good portion of that money on education in Giles County, technology in Giles County, and what it takes to make the classroom better. And, you know, we did a proposal with, with the county, saying here we'd like to have $10 million to do all these physical things, not the educational things, but physical things to keep our buildings up and put them in good shape. I really think we ought to pursue, rather than a billion five in our building fund, if you would call it that, this year. I would like to see us put enough money to do maybe social studies textbooks this year, because this is where the thing is, and it's history textbooks next year, I don't know what the schedule is, whatever comes up next year, then we approach that one too. And we spend our money on education, and we, you know, we just go and tell the county commissioners, you know, it's our job to educate the kids in Giles County, which we know it is, that's what we all know how to do. And it's your responsibility along with ours to keep our schools in great shape, improve some of the needs, so we need a $10 million budget. We could get turned down, but, you know, we have got to do the right things for education because we're just on the bottom rung in South Central Tennessee District, and we're not making the progress we need to make at several of our schools in Giles County. And that's the reason for some of these changes and things that are going on that Dr. Webb is doing. But we need to put our funds in the right place, and I think we could relax.
Laptops rather than rooftops.
Right.
Saying the rooftops need to be fixed so we don't rain on the laptops.
Yeah, I agree with that. You know, there's, we were talking about putting your roof on here, morning pavement, and new windows and all that stuff, yeah, but none of that, it's appealing to the educational system because it makes it, I guess, more comfortable, take all the sun rays out at Glasgow Mitchell mornings and that sort of thing. But it's not education in itself where it's actually going to succeed, and I mean, that's where our job is. The more I think about it, you know, I've got this, I've got this time supporting what you're saying. For a big place for four years to start getting our technology upgraded, and I keep hearing camp, camp, camp. Mr. Green brought up the virtual, virtual machines, yeah, the virtual machines, Dr. Webb working on getting computers in the finance room, but if we don't get them in, we've got to support the textbooks, we've got to do something. Well, we got, we got $125,000 in textbook budgets lined up, and, you know, that, that won't get computers for everybody that's sitting in the social district. One thing I don't know. One thing I don't know is, how many kids do we have in our social studies program? How many kids are going to be affected by these textbooks? Do you have any ideas?
This is K through 12, so it'll be just about every single student in the county will be affected.
So, we've got 4,000 kids that take social studies. Somebody take...
It may be a different group for each grade.
It might be a different level at this level.
That was given as the K-12 supplement, sir. That was what was given to us.
This is what I would just...
I would read out to my grandchildren.
When they're two and three.
I'd read... I'd sit down and read that to my grandchildren.
We need to have a work session to discuss how we're going to...
Thank you so much for your consideration.
Ladies first.
I can show the children, turn out ladies first.
Thank you. I'm Connie Stacks, and I'm here to request... For Helen's, with sending my students that earn the privilege of going to FCCA National Leadership Conference. They have worked extremely hard all year long. They've won a district, state, and now they are... Have advanced to national competition, and we are short $1,500. $980 of that is what I'm estimating the cost to be to take a suburban with my students to San Antonio, Texas. That's the round trip cost of just driving there and back. It doesn't include driving down there. We're going to estimate we'll be using the suburban lot down there because we're really close to the convention center and everything is pretty much within walking distance. But this suburban is $580. Plane tickets are $2,000. And so, we opted to drive, and I'm... Emery says that it costs the suburban $850. The school board, if that is possible, and we are continuing to fundraise. I have two more fundraisers scheduled, car wash type things that are being closed out Saturday, and hopefully we'll raise the other money that we need of the $1,500, and that is my request to y'all. And I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
One quick, when is your conference?
We are going the first week in July, July 5th. The 10th, 6th through the 10th, but we're delaying it because of driving. We're delaying on the 5th.
Okay. And how much do you rate this conference?
We have raised $4,500 of the $6,000.
Okay, you need $1,500.
We need $1,500.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me something I want to put on the agenda to call me. Come up a little later. Put it on with the things. But it'd be in time for...
Yeah, it'd be in time.
Need $1,500 or we need $980 for this suburban? Which one was it?
I... We need total about $1,500. We are continuing to do some fundraising. I've got one scheduled tomorrow, one Saturday, and I'm mainly requesting that the suburban cost be covered. So... But if you can do the $1,500, that'll be awesome. That'll help pay for some food.
We actually had a cost associated with this.
Are you trying to rent the suburban?
No. Our county suburban, it's 50 cents a mile to use our county's suburban, when it used to be a free thing.
We absorb all the miles.
Mr. Young, is it... Okay, good.
I mean, they know something that I don't. I'll make a motion for finance management.
Anytime someone from the school system from a beginning, a school function goes on a trip, unless it is something that's just segregated only to us, a specific school, but if it's something that's going to be put for, like, say, for example, out of CTE, it's considered an in-kind expenditure. Therefore, even if there is an expenditure sake for what the mileage would cost for the suburban of going on a trip, we don't try to run and write a check back to ourselves. So, therefore, I don't know, we were just referencing that, if that was a concern, the cost for the suburban would be considered in kind. There wouldn't be a bill to ourselves to pay for that expenditure. It would come out of our transportation for the fuel.
Come out of our budget for the fuel.
For the fuel only, but not for the actual mileage.
The fuel only, according to my quest, is $255 from here to there. So, about a $500 cost.
Excuse me. I believe Dr. Harwood was up in our station rather well. My thank you for your comments. I have a trouble my... I'll speak briefly. I just came here to support what my wife was saying as a college educator. I like what I heard, and I hope you all make it happen. We're struggling at college level with lack of literacy skills in our incoming students. This has become an increasing problem. I believe it's the unfortunate consequence of a noble but failed program called No Child Left Behind. Now, I'm not here to debate that, but what do we do about it? And what we have to do about it is put text against these students, whether that's digital or old-fashioned text. It doesn't matter to me, as long as they're getting the need with the skills they need, and I'm not having to go back and do what they should have learned. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Sounds to me like we're going to do the right thing here in Goldenwood. Appreciate it.
I want you to settle rumors around town. I'm glad Ms. Moore is here tonight.
Settle this one. What was the exact cost on paving the asphalt in Ritzland?
I don't have the number with me. Are you glad to get that information for you?
No, I won't. Yes, we would be thankful. I'm tired of people coming up to me saying this and that. This is a good time for the board to settle it in front of everybody where we're all known.
Mr. Harwood, it's $200,000 worth... Well, $198,000 worth of asphalt with parking lot in Ritzland, and we made a patch. If we amend that, get a change order to make the patch, that Ritzland Elementary School was about $5,000. So, he's been... It's about $200, $3,000.
$200 and $3,000.
Yes, sir, for both schools.
Or asphalt paid.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, you want it? Move on to our next item. Senator Johnson, committee, regular board meeting, main race, no approval of bids, both sub bus equipment materials, including three buses that will be being retired. They'll be put on online.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Truck, maintenance truck, top of this one. On my field trip to Ritzland School, Skews USA, NCC, Giles County Hospital, 7-on-7 tournament, without pulling hospital. Do we have a motion? No, committee board, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion to approve this, Senator Johnson? Motion without a second?
I second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor? Yeah, vote. I want to move on to our next item, which is budget and finance. First item under that one is the approval of bids for tires, fuel, fuel and fluids, and bus drives.
Mr. Chairman, moving forward. We have in the packet a copy of the recommendation for the bids for oil, fuel, and tires, and so forth, and all the vehicle fluids, oil, lubricants, and whatnot, for transportation, as well as the bus drivers' physicals. Recommend approval.
All right, do we have a motion?
I might get lost in this, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Any discussion or question? All in favor? Any vote? Our next item, approval of the carpet bids for the GCHS library and the possible extension of the carpet bid for Monah Hill School Library.
Mr. Chairman, as a board, we have received two bids. We need to pick this out. These are actually carpet squares to replace the carpet at Giles County Hospital. There are places inside the hospital, the library, that are actually trip hazards at this point, and we are actually asking for approval of the lowest bid, $8,237.80, for the carpet tile squares, so that if something is damaged, we can replace tiles, which was in, replace the entire piece of the entire rug. We're also asking for the possible extension of that bid for Monah Hill School, Monah Hill School, excuse me, their library as well, if funds are available after we get done with this. This money's coming out of our general purpose budget, it's not coming out of our fund office. Recommend approval, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion. Before we... I'm going to put a question. Are either of these local lenders?
Not to my knowledge, sir. They came... You just advertise and they bid. I don't know who... I'm not familiar with any of these companies. But we actually specified the squares, so... I don't think I've ever seen a bid that's $124 cents difference, $15,000.
All right, do we have a motion? Second?
I second.
Are there any other questions or discussions? All in favor? Any vote? Next item is approval for removal of trees in the roof of Perry, Elton School, due to storm damage.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as a board, we have had quite a bit of bad luck here recently in regard to these storms that come through, especially thirty or so ago. And last weekend, we lost four or five very old trees down at Elton School, as well as the rooftop and the old testicle there. In addition to that, we've had a $4,000 lot in the south side to our security alarm system at Southside Elementary. So, I'm requesting authorization to take care of those trees and the roof repair, as well as the security system. We have filed that, just with the insurance, and we're waiting for them to give us the final... In fact, I talked to them this afternoon. We're waiting for final questions from them.
Before we... Something we may need to look at, putting on this, as far as storm damage, the back doors of the gym at Elton. This cop took me around Elton today and showed me some stuff. Back doors of the gym, water's flowing under the doors, and the gym floor is messed up now.
I also request, Mr. Chairman, I requested a contractor to come and have a look at that gym floor and see what it costs to fix that. Our folks are actually looking at the door squeaks and the threshold in the doors.
The whole door needs replacing. It looks like the bottom of those doors are shod and messed up.
And I'll have the... I'll get the adjuster, go get it.
Do we have a motion? Oh, wait. Second? Any discussion or questions? Do we require a storm damage? All in favor? Any vote?
Mr. Chairman, I have to go back to item one. I thought of something that involved our work. There was a new wall that I think got passed in March about... He got physicals. I don't remember the details, but the physician or the institute in the past had to have some kind of new number, and we got into a problem with it at work where one of our drivers, where he went and didn't have this number. I recommend we look into that and make sure... I'll try to find some more information, Senator Johnson.
We remove the approval, that's all that is discussed. We'll move on to our next item. Where's the Ritzland School, Skews USA, trip going to the Skews USA National, and they are requesting $807. They grateful to... Two fundraisers, they raised $7,493, and they're requesting us to help them pay the $800. Can I get that correct? Yes, sir. I spoke with... I spoke with Mr. Long a couple days ago, and he sent me this email, and I know we talked to him at the board meeting at the Ritzland, and said if we could help, we would try to, but he wanted to find it. He said he didn't want to ask for help unless he absolutely needed it. And I think his fundraisers were pretty much done, and he was actually able to raise almost $7,500, which is impressive. So, I would like to make a motion to go ahead and approve this $807. I mean, we've done a lot for athletics. This is engineering skills, skills that our kids can use academically. I think we need to go ahead and approve this. We have a motion to approve the $807 from Ritzland Skews USA National trip for students going. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Monday, Wednesday. They work really hard for $800, $900. Yeah, I've got a good address on that. All right, our next item concludes the second reading of the school board policy, 2.704, general fixed assets, 4.203, advanced college play, 4.204, summer school, 4.408, media, 4.502, parent family, problem, 4.602, class ranking, 4.605, graduation requirements, 4.601, and of course testing, 4.704. Approve of the second reading. Do we have a motion? Before we get into that... Sorry, I'm the people counter in this. On the first one, general fixed assets, 2.704, page two, they've been... There were changes everywhere from Office of Internal Controls to the Office of Financial Management. At the top of that, volume two, they didn't change the bold ending there, Office of Internal Controls. So, that needs fixing.
I've got something else on 4.6001. First line, students entering the ninth grade will be required to take the success for the past statement and score on the... We deleted three gateway exams, but we didn't include anything. So, mandated scores on Esther. So, it should just end up state mandated.
We just need to add the... Fire the cross testing.
Sir.
Get along with the gateway. If there are any operating now, there may be some gateway difficulty, force of... I'll have to keep it clean and dry.
This is, this isn't a grammar thing, this is just a question. We changed the lines five, eleven, and fourteen, we're taking out, but four point two oh four, excuse me. And I was just curious why such a large change was made. Four point two oh four, summer school?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Basically, what we're doing is the state board has removed the seat time requirements for summer school. The state board, the state board of education?
Right, no, the what time?
Seat time. It used to be that you had to sit in the seat for one hundred and thirty-three hours in summer school to get credit.
Okay.
And that's no longer required.
Okay.
So that's basically it, and I don't know what the purpose behind only being allowed to earn two credits in summer school would be, if we have the opportunity to offer technology resources and the credit recovery opportunities for our kids that have already been through classes.
Just out of curiosity, are these only for credit recovery, or can kids get, children up to summer school for and get extra credits?
It's my professional opinion that should be able to go to summer school and get a credit. We haven't, in the past. I think we should consider that.
I agree. Okay, that's all, that's just my question.
If not, I'll ask for a motion for approval of the second reading of the school board policy. I'm going to, we have a second?
It's going to be with the exception of, we're going back to more attention.
I'm going with the exception. To approve the second reading of the school board policy with the exception of two point seven oh four, four point two oh four, four point seven oh oh, the three quarters. Do we have a second? Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Moving on to our next item, the first item is our general purpose. Dr. Wilson, question.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Melinda, in the background here at Elton is just a question. Basically, we started the year, our beginning budget fund balance for the thirteen year was, thirteen fourteen year was three point four million, roughly. It should be, the actual now is about three point six nine, about three point six seven, so just ask you to amend that from the beginning budget fund balance to the actual to close before. This was actually the, this started the year, this is not what we carry forward for next year.
So at the beginning of the year, we actually had three point six six million?
It turned out to be the actual, yes, sir, as opposed to what we had posted.
I'm going to.
I like my work.
Four ten dollars.
Exactly.
We have a motion. Second, we have any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Next is our slate and support grant budget amendment. Dr. Wilson.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have, we're very blessed to have a little extra money out of state support schools for our budget, and so we're, that's how we're able to do the OAS training, which is actually bullying training, as well as to do some other things in our school, two high schools, these are high school buildings. So we recommend an approval of the back to this amendment, and all that, since we're mainly at House Department.
Do we have a power? Second. Any questions or discussion concerning the slate and support grant? All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Next is our TCAP board.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we did not get our data back in time, if I may do you have the, the student scores to, as required by board policy, and required by statute, actually, to add those scores in to calculate as part of the student final average for TCAP. So we were able to request a waiver at the, the head of the commission of education, and that waiver was granted, and so we did not include those scores in the final averages for our students this year, but it's only for this year, and it does require a group action to make an official. Recommend approval, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a motion to approve the TCAP board?
What happened to Mr. Hugman?
Sir?
What happened to Mr. Hugman? He said to get those out.
I have no, no comment.
I do have a question. What are we going to do in 2015 when they don't get the scores out yet?
It's going to require legislative change at some point, because you can't keep doing waivers, that's for sure.
No.
As a matter of fact, there's a debate over whether with the waivers even legitimate or not, but it's already been done, so.
Well, because there's counties that have already, they've waited and went ahead and got the TCAP scores into their grades.
Right, and that's why we went ahead and waived, as did most everybody in the state, request a waiver, and got it, just got it removed this year, now I can't speak to next year.
I think we better make plans for next year than ahead.
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
We got to approve the waiver?
Yes, sir. Grab that approval statement, board is standing.
Approve the TCAP board?
I make a motion.
We got a second? Second. Any discussion or other questions?
Do we ever have a TCAP score?
Well, we have right now, it's a quick, part of the quick score, we have the final document. So have we waited and discovered all this? Excuse me, I have the final document.
So they still wouldn't know whether they hit the document?
Yes, well, they're personal or not.
As I said, we still need to make sure that we have a plan in place if there's activation. Any other discussion?
Do they have an idea of where we've begun to look at?
We have the quick scores, but that's raw data, so we're not really sure at this point in time as to whether or not those are going to be, we're not sure that there'll be some adjustments to that, you know, as we go forward, though, no, sir, we don't.
You have questions? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Moving on down to the next item, the first reading of the school board policies, five point one one five, assignment transfer, five point three one oh, vacation holidays, five point three oh two one, sick leave, six point four one one, student wellness.
I've got two questions on policy five one one five. Policy is written currently, saying the Ritzland School shall sign personnel to various schools, departments, by May fifteenth for licensed personnel, and June fifteenth for non-personnel. Does that follow this year?
Also, the statute now requires June fifteenth.
The statute, the state?
State statute.
So the state statute automatically overrides local?
Sorry.
So the state statute automatically overrides local, even though ours is more stringent?
No, sir, I mean, both can have a motion, stringers, it's up. The purpose behind that change at state level, which is for, was the fact that a lot of folks don't graduate, don't get out of school, go out for the month fifteen, so maybe those kind of changes of May fifteen creates some chaos, so I'd always help if it was good.
The other question on that, one hundred and thirty, members of the board, shall be notified, transfers five business days in advance, transfers whenever practical, or soon as possible there. This will probably come up later, but I think a lot of board members with the recent shift in things at school, decided to relate with it, and I did appreciate it, I'm sure some other board members that may understand that transfers can be touchy, as a board member, I need to not propagate what we get, but it's nice to know it's going.
Yes. Apologies.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for bringing it up, because I was, you jumped on the market. Any other question? Did you also notify the principals at any time?
That was sent to the tax on the day, and we had letters delivered to schools for those who weren't, maybe I get those letters.
I can hear you, Dr. Wilson.
So we had sent to the tax, telling them that, sent to the tax on Friday morning, tell them that we were making changes, and yet I had Dr. Collins, Ms. Young, actually delivering a couple of some letters to, 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 to. I'll send you a letter, your letters, of any change that happened, even in our building.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak. I'm just going to basically go all the way back to the public forum, starting with Ms. O'Jay and Ms. Mitchell. We are professional people. There, there are ways of going about doing things, and we got detailed account before our action. My understanding, things were not done properly, and one of the things was, principals were not notified in the time of matter, nor were the teachers in these dispositions were notified in a proper manner. I did hear Ms. O'Jay say, as well as Ms. Mitchell, that on Monday, you're going to go back and possibly revise, you're going to take a look at everything to see if they can be put back in their disposition. I really hope that you take this time from this point on to really think about it, you know, because I haven't been given an answer to why they're moving. I hear something in regards to academics. Can you give me a reason here today, why we're moving? And reason being?
I'd be happy to discuss with you, brother.
You know, once again, like I say, I think it's pretty much why everybody is here, you know, there, wrongdoing has been done, and if I take a look at the situation, we're moving two wonderful people from their disposition who has no obligation with anyone, who hasn't been contacted or thoughtful before the principal stated they're doing anything wrong, or not doing the job. So if you're going to move these two people to other schools, who are you going to put in place to meet half the criteria that they have met throughout the years that they have been in their positions? Have you did your research to see who would need that guideline?
No, ma'am.
So we're just going to go in, not knowing who's going to be in their shoes? I, I, you know, I don't think that's very good judgment of character, because everybody here today, and those who are not here, we look up to you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I really, I would like to request that they be put back in their positions, and if possible, if we need a separate mouth teacher, and we need a guidance teacher at Richville High School, do your research, look for somebody who is just as qualified and not exceedingly more qualified than they are, and place them at that location. But in the future, we have principals that you, who looks up to you, they respect you, but you also got to respect them too. So in the future, I think, just like Mr. Brent stated on the policy decision, we just people, we'd like to be notified, and, you know, we don't have a problem with you doing your job, because that's what you're here for, and, you know, by all means do it, but when we, when I feel like some wrongdoing has been done, I don't speak much, and everybody knows that, throughout my years of being on the board, but when it's had to be to speak and somebody's been done wrong, I'm going to say.
I respect it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I know the, as this policy being moved from first reading, it also stricken therapy comment about the transfers, and I think this is a touchy subject for the board right now, and since we're already fifth of June fifteenth date, I would say we're handling it for another meeting. It's really going to impact us.
Yes, sir. We'll have to remove the first reading of policies five point one one five, assignment transfer, first reading signed. I'll second. And questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Now that's the most, approval of the first reading of policies five point three one oh, five three oh two, and six point four one one.
Only five point three oh two, only, uh, we're done. The Board of Education, the GCA, Education Association, GCA stands for Education Association.
Don't need to do the Dallas County Education Association or GCA.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Six point four, six three. Five point three oh two. Five point three oh two one.
I think your stage should be brought up. I had to have it pointed at you because I didn't get you.
So GCA. Where I missed that one. I'll do that correction, we'll ask for much, approve the first reading of those three policies. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Next item is our director of schools, evaluation. Y'all know if you have, evaluate our director of schools and approve. We use that, evaluation is graded on a likelihood scale of one to five, with one being significantly below expectations, and five being significantly above expectations, two below, and three at, and four above. Wasn't able to get everyone's evaluation in just yet, but ones I received, I was receiving an evaluation of, of an overall average of three point nine. Thank you for the job you're doing. Thank you for the job you're doing. Anyone else?
I'd like to speak. I scored Dr. Wells much lower because with his grasp of finances, I'm greatly satisfied. He has done things with the budget that our previous director didn't have, and he's exceeded my expectation on that. Some of the recent activities has caused me concern due to the word unprofessional. First, I want to go back. We've all heard rumors, and I'll go on the record. If anybody working in this school system thinks there's something illegal going on, please call the police. Here, I'm going to make a statement because I keep getting calls. Call the police. You could be saving my family's life, your family's life, somebody's life. Call the police. Don't call me. I can't do anything as much as I could, but call the police. Two, we had incident about a year ago where we had some people's pay get cut, and I thought it was understood that the school system was going to go see these people, and not everyone at all of them got seen. And I thought that was unprofessional, because I've been in large firms where there's been some drastic cuts, and at least the director of one of the top engineering firms in the world, a loan from California to look me in the eye. I respect that. Then when I started getting calls about teachers getting moved, I understand for improvement for change, we have to change things, we have to get people. I understand that. But then I get one side calling saying this is a good move, and another side calling it's a bad move, and it gets emotional, and it's hard to get to the truth. But I look at the facts, and the principals weren't contacted, and the principal didn't know what was going on. So, that causes, that causes me concern. If I was a principal, what's that, what's my future? Or am I being respected? And in leadership, you have to get your second rate, the people that are in the trenches, on you to support you, understanding that they're going to get moved. You at least got to help them make the transition for people. So, then I get, I get thinking, and I see a trend forming, and that trend is, you know, after the letters went out, people kind of disappeared, and it's hard to get answers. People sitting in, there's rumors going around even today. So, I start looking at, if I was an unprofessional person, what would I do? If I was going to try to skirt this issue, what would I do? What I would do is I'd wait to the very last second to send out another group of letters that were going to be more harsh and tried even the first. It wouldn't give the board enough time to have a special call meeting, because the board can't take action forty-five days before an election, they can't take action forty-five days after election, which in the middle of a school year, I got to here to appease everybody. That's what I would do if I was unprofessional. So, I have one question, Mr. Dr. Wells. Are there more letters written?
Sir, there are more letters written, and they're not going out.
Are they not going out because I asked that question?
No, sir. Because of all the stuff that's happened this way, even though I could have questioned them, the letters weren't going out. I mean, I respect that people will be moving.
That's not my point. My point is we're not going to do that anymore. If that concerns me and removes trust, that you're going to wait to this last second to send letters out that wouldn't give me any kind of reaction. Per contract law that I don't need, I'd like to vote on a unilateral termination of the director of schools. They'll take a five-two vote. I don't think they'll pass, but I'd like to get a point across that morale's down, things are up, and we got to pull together. That's all else. I respect you, Mr. Wells, but Dr. Wells, but with what's happened in the last three or four weeks, I don't think the school system can survive without our support.
Yes, sir. Before you take this, I want to kind of echo what Mr. Green said. As far as professionalism, I don't know where it comes from, but I was in charge of a whole bunch of people when I was in the Air Force, and one of the things that I always did is if I had to move somebody from one place to another, I didn't have to give a reason, okay, because I was the man in charge. But the bottom line is, if you do not respect your people, your people will not respect you. And if you don't, come forward and say, and I'm just, because the one of friends, Ms. O'Jay, if you don't, before you send a letter, call her into your office and, Ms. O'Jay, this is why I'm moving you. I'm moving you to point at you, but your skills can be used here. Give her a chance to respond. I know that moving people is totally imperative. You can do whatever you want, but the problem is, is if you do what you want, and it disrupts the education of our students, the education of the people, the kids of Dallas County, then it disrupts what we have to do. We have a meeting that's like this, where everybody's sitting here going, what is going on? So, and then after what Mr. Green asked, which was, were any of the letters going out? And you said, not now, which means you did have letters that were going to go out, and you're not doing it simply because we brought it up, or he brought it up. So, I echo what Mr. Green said.
Do your thing, yes?
I have a question. First time, I'm not bad, but for education, does that be a little light? Is it more close to somebody that's got children and has to do? I don't need to find it.
Well, we've, we've already had our own.
Yeah, I kind of figured that. But I got the point.
I understand that, Mr. Green. Somebody like to make a motion to suspend rules, let this gentleman speak.
Before this gentleman speaks, I'd like to talk to him.
All right, sir.
And stay on the same matter before we do something that I already given.
You know, I've been in business, and I've been in the school system for the last six years now. And in business, there were lots of times that I didn't like the way that management addressed us, how they did things. But, you know, of all the years that I spent, I certainly liked the results of the ones that did right. Not only did it make our company a better company, but it made our employees that remained there better workers, and better group employees, and better team. And I say this honestly, Dr. Wells, you hadn't done everything the way I would have done. Gosh, I hope nobody does everything the way I would have done, and that would be a terrible thing. But I, I support your intentions and what you have done, and I totally support what you've been able to do with our budget and your expertise on balancing things and making money available to make improvements in schools and good things to help education, and that is what we're here for. Now, we can get off on methods, and we can get off on, on, you know, synchronicities about every little action that you're taking, how you take it. Now, to me, results are what we're looking for. We're looking for results in education in Dallas County. And I think personally that Dr. Wells has provided us with the best change in education in Dallas County in the last two years. And that's not going to make a lot of people happy, because a lot of people don't like change. A lot of people are not up for it, and a lot of people want things to be just like they used to be. I've had phone calls this week from people that have been in the system for a long time that said, you know, we just need to go back like we used to. No, we don't. No, we don't. We failed before. We're still failing now, but at least we're getting the right things in the right order. And that gentleman right here has been the one that has started that movement, and I think we need support him to continue that movement. I think we need to extend his contract to another four years. I think we need to move it on out forward and let him know if we want to continue this movement and do the right thing.
You know, I hate to get this in public, but if Walker Ings or CBS or Gibson Garden, I have made a mistake. And every time I did, I'd go back and I'd try to examine, how did I make that? How did I think that was an intentional hurt? Did I not look at and examine the protection in the way I should have? Did I not spend enough time and thought? Dr. Wells has been right over the coat by every member here, including myself, about the methods that he used to talk to Pittsburgh, our values and forth. In my view, that's how I view mistakes. I thought it was a mistake not to go down and handle it, but when it was in Swiss School, David and Summer, I think that was all a mistake. That's the thing that I would hope for, that he would be around and learn from those mistakes and go forward. You know, going back to two thousand and twelve and disaster, I guess I'm wiping my brow because we didn't have to fire anybody the last couple of years. I just think about that total disaster. He has taken it, but he in own, he's been half his power at the financial management office. Does he not know the budget, the averages, the forward, the mess he had? I'm talking about the good things that I've said. I would hope that this board would consider everybody that has been done this past year to try to support this school system, to move it forward. Every time I talk with him about a problem, we have not agreed on every single thing that we've talked about. But every time that I have talked with him about a problem, we've come up with either compromise or a solution. I like that about the man. I'm in, I'm going to sit here and say I support Dr. Wells on one side. I don't think a year is enough for a man that has his experience. And I agree with half of what Rhonda said and about half of what Jim said, but I just think, you know, that that's just too drastic a measure right this moment. I think we need to give the man another shot at it. I'm sorry from the bully crowd that don't agree with me, but if you had had to work with him, you might sing a different tune. He is trying to improve the system in Dallas County. Not everybody gets to do what they want to do. When my boss walks in, I, you know, I have to salute him. He tells me I got to go play tomorrow, and I have to go. I don't like it. I'll give you my word, I'll tell him on. But I ain't, you know, I, I'm just saying, and, and the city just stood up here, we've got wonderful reputations and experience, and I appreciate the good job that they've done, and I hope that Dr. Wells will consider what they've said today and their pride in me said. I hope he will. Anyway, I, I guess I'm done with my rant and rant, and I just, this is a, this was kind of a total surprise. I'd like to see him stay. I don't think he's been here long enough to go either way. He's made every time, it just seemed like me and him talked this last year, was once or twice away for an hour or two, there was a rock, and somebody, he lifted a rock, and there was something else that we had to uncover and solve that problem. And he did, and some of those decisions were not, you know, not, were tough decisions. They're not something that anybody, everybody would like or go along with. I can make a decision whether to let him stay or go, but that's not a decision I think they ought to be made this year. I'm sorry. I disagree totally.
I respect your opinion.
I respect your statement.
No, I do have to say the one thing that I agree with everybody on is Dr. Wells has owned it. I mean, a hundred percent. For the beginning of the year and this year, he's presented us with a balanced budget, which is, I remember the first phone call I got from him, who says, I'm going to present you with a balanced budget. You object to that? No. So, budget wise, I don't think any of us have a problem with what he's done. It's just, you've been getting a lot of phone calls. He is the board, we have to look at what the team, what's going on with our students, what's going on with our teachers.
I think that Jim and Rhonda have pretty much said in public, what we've said in all of us have said in private, what we expect them to do, and this guy told it. I think if he corrects it, it makes some of our problems will be solved. I don't know. No tomatoes, please.
Mr. Green's made a motion, and we need a second.
Oh, it's his motion.
For the unilateral termination.
Unilateral termination of the board, I don't need GCPA contracts. Takes a five vote, go get a show, we interact, that's all.
We have a second.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll do a roll call.
Hey, one more than you, Frank. It's really clear, what a yes for you and a no.
A yes is to terminate the contract, and a no is to keep Dr. Wells. This is a five, a six, a day vow, twice the fourth, a five-two vote.
Y'all might want to hear me before y'all make this vote.
Well, sir, the motion was on the floor, and I forgot to act on the motion before I could go to something.
I'm saying, look, this is, it's got a lot to do with exactly what you're talking about, right? It could actually swing, but it's just. Would you, if you was, God, if somebody came to your door, in other words, if you were talking to somebody about something, and that was a quiet conversation, and if somebody in your office called another place and tells what your conversation is about, this man's had people stabbing you in the back. I'll hear.
I understand that, sir, but I've.
My son's been bullied. Y'all can hear me, you can hear my lawyer, now what do you want to do?
I'll hear you as soon as I take this vote.
No, I want to talk full of it.
Well, that's, we've already got the motion on the floor.
Y'all make your mind up what to do.
Say what you got.
Well, I got to say, I got a twelve-year-old child, okay, goes to Mountain Hill School. He got bullied last year. Halfway through the year, I went and spoke to his president, fine lady right there. Out of Pictor, I know this town, he's a fine man. I think more than that lady, this beard. So, let me tell you, after I spoke to them, the rest of the year, my son's life went miserable. He said it made it worse. This year, I waited till the end of the year, tried to. Last week of school, he gets snatched at the park, off a slide, bruises his ribs. Okay, I talked to this beard, she was honest. If my son don't say nothing to her, she can't do nothing about it. Most bully kids can't speak, okay? I go see Mr. Wells. I don't know this man. I couldn't care less, because my kids I care about, okay? I go see this man. In private, we walk out. Way outside his office door from here, this fellow right here. I spoke a couple of things about what the meeting was about and left. The next morning at seven forty-five, when my kid gets to school, especially teacher makes it set down, says, you need to sit down, you might get hurt, your daddy might go tell somebody. This is the next morning from a private conversation, somebody in his office has done called that school, done.
school, done teachers, called my son. Grown teachers, same five teachers that had him at the park before. Might have been in trouble for not watching, I don't know, it's none of my business. But the bottom line is, these five teachers bring my eleven-year-old child into the hall. That's intimidation, sir. Okay? That's the bottom line, that's intimidation. My son, you know what I told him to do, and Mr. Webb, if you get approached, get talked to it, you're not to talk about it. Now, this is the next morning, and this man's got people in his own office. You know what? You probably weren't gonna make the vote tonight, you know why? Because he makes decisions that nobody else wants to make. You make them? You make them? You make them? We make decisions every day, nobody likes. I make them all the time. Twenty-four years, I worked for Mother Credit, I was gonna sit three o'clock in the morning. I've got ice pick hole, I've got bullet holes on me, I was a great procession. I walked away in 2010, okay? I grew, my, my son says, "Dad, one night you ain't gonna come home." I walked away. So, I'm used to understanding you do things that people don't like. There ain't nothing worse than being in a little field taking a call by, and you got far with surfing him a shotgun. This is one pretty pleasant situation. So, I'm used to exactly what this man, and right now, I feel like this is a firing squad, and the target was pulled over before he got in the door. Because why? This is what I've seen in this community, Mountain Hill out there, most of the teachers, everybody involved, the people that actually went to that school. This is a good old boy, take care of your group session. I'm a transplant. Unfortunately, this man's a transplant too. So, you know what? You're the same vote, I don't know this man. Get care of that. But I'm gonna tell you, the bullying, I've looked your policy over, they ain't one thing in there by the teacher. When them five teachers took my son in that hall to try to... Y'all can color in any color you want. That's an eleven-year-old child with five dollars. You're trying to intimidate that child. If it happens again, that five thousand dollars I gave down the curtain will go forth. And that's all I've got to say.
I'm gonna take the floor too for a few minutes, so we can take the floor now. I'm late myself, and I apologize, but I'm Craig Jones, I'm not in this community. No, I'm gonna say what I need to say real quick. I'm not... Anybody that comes into this community knows what's going on in this school system. I'm Craig Jones.
What, who's Craig Jones?
Nobody. Absolutely nobody. I have a kid that's in the school system here. And when I came here, everybody says the same thing, it's a bad school system. You don't want your kids to go to school here. That's what I was told when I moved to here. Um, so that's no secret to anybody. People from this community take their kids to other communities to school every, because of the school system. We've got a broken system. I don't want my young kids, I got a fifteen-year-old niece that's at the high school, I don't want my young kids to have to go through the mess that's in our school system today. When decisions are made, unfortunately, sometimes folks don't like them. But if you sit back and do nothing, you're gonna get what you always got. There are a lot of teachers in this room that I love and think the world of, and I think are great people and great leaders. I don't know who's to blame for the problems that we've got, but we've got problems. Things need to be fixed. They need to be fixed, and I don't know if they can fix them.
Ms. Glover, no to study, yes to... No is for Dr. Webb to study, and yes is for...
And we have to do this tonight.
I'm questioning about all...
You got the motion.
Mr. Green. I'll tell the board to take action forty-five days before vote.
The board can't do any...
I understand that before the election. But I'm trying to figure out how we have got from trying to, how we got right here on terminating him.
Mr. Green, make a motion.
I mean, I know that, I know that. I have.
Right, oh, you're not...
You got two yeses.
I respect everybody's decisions, and I understand moves to change have to happen. If they go back to the leader, they can't help us if they're wrong. I respect all y'all's decisions. I don't think any way that's gonna reflect, take anything they're gonna do in the future. I'd be part of the board.
I, I agree with a lot of what she says, but I just think that, I also agree with what Mr. Bryant said. He's not good with the budget, makes bad personnel decisions, I think. But that's my opinion.
You do realize that personnel decisions are, he has got...
Yep.
His responsibility to group people, his responsibility to put people in the positions that he thinks are to you, close for our school system, it's not our job. Our job is policy, our job is budget, and our job is personnel. Just because we don't like some of his methods, well, this is ridiculous to bring this up at this point tonight, simply because there's a pile of people in the room and it's collection and you're up.
You be asking you a question. How many people got letters that you know?
I'll be more than happy to talk to you after the...
Talk to them now, we're all in here now.
Well, I know the grade right off the bat. Everybody here today has good, um, aspects to Dr. Webb. Um, you know, we're not here to put anybody or, we all got problems, you better mind. And I guess where I come from, or what I have heard, has put me in this position of the reason why I felt this way. I will not go on record, I will not say anything, 'cause I'm not here to do anything to disrespect Dr. Webb, because part of me wants to say, yes, we all should be given a second chance somewhere along in life. We all want our second chances. But if what is told to me, I'll bring up no name, because everybody has a proxy to be respected on that issue. Just keep in mind, the Dr. Webb stand, Dr. Webb, nobody is after you what you get for you, not, not me. But you have to be very, very careful of your actions, because your actions are bad people in a way that, from what, from what I've told him, I will not disclose it information this person. I will come to you one-on-one, because I respect you in that manner. But from this point on, just be very careful of your actions, um, and don't, don't worry about puberty teachers, staff members, next director. Don't be afraid to come to us if you have a problem. You know, that's what we're here for. And we're not here to listen to what you have to say, we don't need to be here ourselves. That's the way I feel about it. And keep in mind, we, we can't please everybody. We can't please everybody, you know? We gonna take what you say into consideration, we gonna weigh the odds, and, and go prepare, and try to find some kind of resolution to what's going on, what took place. So, once again, I would say like, Dr. Webb, I'm not trying to see you in the back or anything like that, just personally, I don't know. I just begin to know you this last decade. I don't know anything negative concerning what you about you versus, I'm just giving notice. So, that's all I have to say.
Move on to the directory report.
As Chairman, we are still working on the, uh, the policy update. We should have this three, uh, first reading, and those, and what we need to bring back. We'll have some more to help to bring to finish up all the policy names. Uh, many of our policies have not been updated since 2008, so we need to bring those up to date, just like stuff we did right there in the years, and so, we'll be bringing up several of those to, over the next few weeks, trying to get those done and get them in front of you for consideration prior to the, uh, August, the start of coming off. Other than that, as Chairman, um, I'll be sending out a party letter and updating you on, on the status of, and all the things that are going on for us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Board members, board members, have you come in? I'm gonna make one, and I wanna make sure we end this disastrous coordinating on a positive note. Dr. Webb got us involved with Magnetic Morelli. I had the pleasure of serving on a committee, two Magnetic members and members of the board and administration here. Last weekend, in the midst of all the storms and everything else, Magnetic Morelli set aside their time, their building, their employees to host twenty-five students from the Giles County Schools. Don't remember whether it was twelve-one and, is twelve-one thirteen, and I don't remember which one it was, okay? And they teamed them, cross-teamed them, where, uh, half of them were originally students, half of them were Giles County High School students on each team. And they had four teams, and they set this program up to propose a way for the Giles County Schools and the business industry of Pulaski to work together for those people that wanted to do jobs in plants. Now, this didn't just include putting parts together in plant. We have one young lady that's working out there as an HR representative for us, she's working in quarters with Magnetic Morelli. We have four other students that were working internships on the floor. There's twenty-five kids that went through this program. I sat through it most of the day on Saturday. They worked a couple hours on Thursday, getting organized, and then the world flooded out, and they had to leave. Well, they came back on Friday morning, some of them came in early, and some of them stayed. The, the plan was from nine o'clock till like two o'clock in the afternoon to be through. My understanding was that there were still kids there working on their problems at four, and some even up to five o'clock in the afternoon. These are your students. These are kids that are looking for a livelihood and something to do, and Dr. Webb has been a participant from the very beginning in trying to make this happen. I said in all of the presentations that these four teams made. I spent thirty-two years in manufacturing here. If I had had four presentations in thirty-two years that equaled what our students presented that day, I would have been tickled to death. I would have been absolutely tickled to death to know that we had students that picked up on things so fast, got in depth with it. We haven't looked at one operation, four different aspects of that operation, one team even went into the point of, here, this is what this operation does, but if we do all these good things to improve this cell, then what is it gonna do to the people that are right next to us? So, they looked at both ends of it. And, you know, I believe they just kept on and on and on, and, you know, what I heard from the Magnetic people is, there's some things that were brought up today that we're gonna do. Your kids provided us with that. Well, Dr. Webb and this group out here provided our kids with that opportunity. Some of those kids are going on to college. They'll have the opportunity to make it into engineers, HR people, finance, whatever. This company is gonna grow, and it's trying to get up to a thousand, twelve-hundred people in the next couple of years. You know, they need good employees, and what we saw the other day were good possibilities for them to have, and they're your kids, they're your students, and they are some very aggressive and very good people. I appreciate how you trained them and how you taught them as teachers, and I appreciate you as parents and how you brought them up. But I really appreciate the fact that Magnetic and Dr. Webb said, "Let's get together and see if we can do this thing right." You know, we went into folk high schools, we talked to every junior and every senior, trying to get people, we ended up at thirty-three, and it turned out to be forty-five on the last day, 'cause everybody's got this fascination with working in a plant's the dirtiest job in the world. If you wanna see a good working plant, you wanna see a caring bunch of people that are managing that plant, and you wanna see a plant that's efficient, go out and knock on the door and ask Magnetic Morelli if you could look inside. Now, take a tour, once you look inside the manufacturing area, you're gonna say, "This is not like anything I've ever seen before." This is world-class, world-class company being a part of our education system, started by Dr. Webb and by Ken Ketchum, Magnetic Morelli. It's a good thing for this community. I have, I have one copy, I have no time to run copies in San Francisco. I've got one copy of the presentation that was made by the winning team, and I gotta tell you, they call themselves the Spud Lights. And you know, their explanation was that the spud was for potatoes, and that's regular 'cause everybody eats potatoes every day. The lights were for Magnetic Morelli and the fact that they make lights. So, if you don't think you've got innovative kids out there, then you just need to look a little closer, because, you know, you might make the same mistake that I make occasionally when I look at people, and I kind of say, "Don't judge them," but I form a little bit of an opinion about them until I get to know them. These kids fall into that category, you know, it's like my hair sticks out over here and I got my hat turning on backwards, and I'm be popping around a little bit. But when it came time for presentations, there were twenty-five kids that participated in the presentation. There wasn't one from each group of six or seven kids, there was twenty-five kids that participated, and they all did well. I wish you could have all seen that, you would have been proud. I wanted to end this meeting, and I know, if you wanna see what they did, then take a look at it, I'll let you see.
I just had one more thing to add, and I don't mean it... Coming all zero in on Magnetic, and we were zero in on Spud. Started all by saying that our technology was about a ten percent. It was called it out last year, it was four or fifty somewhere between. Here's the second thing. I was, my mother, and my aunt, my uncle, I got three aunts that were still teaching. That's part of the reason I ran, 'cause I felt like I owed it to this community. You know, my time was good, because first thing history looks at is school system, and second thing goes, but I'm interested in the school system, 'cause I come from a background. But, and, and second thing is, I love my two teachers. There's not a one I don't like. I don't know the one anymore. And we, we, because of his work on the budget, we were able, next year, we get two percent rate. Well, that's not much, but it's better than firing sixty-four people I talked to around the way it goes. Second thing is, on the internship issue, we're paying a hundred, we went back from, we went to a hundred, back to a hundred percent for every single employee. He found the money to do that. That's because we appreciate what y'all do. And what about the differentiated pay plan? Level five getting five hundred dollars. We have worked that out. We approved it, but he worked that out. And it's because we appreciate the good job that you guys do. And I mean that from God's, from my heart. God is my witness, I mean.
Plus five hundred.
We're sitting here, we're sitting here tonight voting on whether to retain or whether to let go of school service, and when we oughta been voting on, wait a minute, we oughta give in 2% of the raise. I'd make that motion, but I know nobody's gonna jump out there, so. That's my fault.
All right, everybody sees the announcement for the special call meeting, and our next board meeting is Giles County. Nothing else, I left for motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second. All right. I understand.